Lynchburg City School Board certifies that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting and lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. I need a motion to certify.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess we need to certify by roll call. Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Snyder? You weren't there. You weren't there. Dr. Senna? Yes. Let us, since we're beginning a public meeting, let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to amend our agenda to add item B1, Special Announcement, and realphabetize the succeeding items accordingly, add an addendum to item E2, Personnel Report, add item E3, Religious Exemption, and add item G5, the 2017-18 Application for Federal Programs. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So move. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. That brings us to item V1, which is a special announcement. I have a recommendation that the school board appoint Dr. Larry Massey as Acting Superintendent for Lynchburg City Schools effective July 1, 2017. Is there a motion to?
I would like to move that the board approves the appointment of Dr. Larry Massey for interim superintendent.
Second. Any discussion? Okay.
I'd just like to say one thing, that Dr. Massey provided great leadership and consistency during our transition to Dr. Brabrant, and I'm just very pleased that he's willing and able to work in the same capacity for us during this transition.
Okay. Dr. Coleman?
I would like to dito, his willingness to work with the community is admirable.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. I do have a actual formal announcement. Dr. Massey brings a wealth of relevant experience to the interim post, having served as a school superintendent in Virginia for 24 years, including a highly successful tenure as interim superintendent in Orange County, Lynchburg City, and Grayson County. Prior to serving as interim superintendent for these divisions, Dr. Massey served as superintendent for Buckingham County and Russell County Public Schools. Upon assuming the superintendency for Buckingham County, none of the division schools were accredited. Under Dr. Massey's leadership, the school division obtained full state accreditation for all schools and met division-wide adequate yearly progress. Dr. Massey has garnered considerable recognition for his leadership throughout his distinguished career, including being honored as Regional Superintendent of the Year by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents three times, in 1998, 2006, and 2008. Dr. Massey holds a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Tennessee, a Master's Degree in Education Administration from East Tennessee State University, and a Doctorate in Education from Virginia Tech. Look forward to working with Dr. Massey and hope everyone gives him a warm welcome. Okay. So that brings us to item C, Public Announcements or Public Comments. We do have some comments. Before I call Dr. Brennan up, I have to read our policy here. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. Dr. Brennan?
Thank you. Superintendent Brabrant, Chairman Neillis, Vice Chairman Sewell, members of the school board. My name is Bob Brennan, and as you may have heard through the grapevine, I was fortunate, despite a large number of very capable candidates to the school board position, I was appointed by the city council to join you. And I'm looking forward to that. I'm humbled, I am honored, and I'm very nervous, so I hope that you will mentor me and guide me in this position. But I wanted to come to you tonight because this is my last opportunity as a community representative on this side of the podium to just make some, a few brief comments, because I know your agenda is full. But I just wanted to let you know that as far as my application to the school board, I would not have done that unless I felt that Lynchburg City Schools is an important and vital part of our community, both in the past, the present, and the future, and I would not have applied unless I thought there was a school board that had that same vision, and I thank you all for having that. I also know the challenges that lie before this group, including finding a new superintendent to replace Dr. Brabrant, which would be huge, but I am so impressed by your dedication, by your sacrifice of time and energy that you have done, that there's no question that I know you will meet those challenges, and I'm happy to be on your team to participate. Finally, I would be remiss, as the individual who is going to try to fill the position of Dr. Gina Dolan Sewell if I did not recognize her time on the school board for the last nine years, both as member, chairman, and vice chairperson. Gina has done an outstanding job, and I hope that all of us will, I know the community will remember your dedication, Gina, and I know that all of us on the school board are thankful for your service, and I have a small token of District One's appreciation for your service. End of comments.
Very nice segue into our next agenda, item D1, Resolution of Recognition. Brabrant or?
I think you have this, Dr. Neillis.
All right. I have this. In recognition, we have a resolution of recognition for Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell. This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation for Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell upon her retirement as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Dr. Regina T. Dolan Sewell, a champion crusader for public education in the city of Lynchburg, has worked diligently as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for a total of nine years. Her professional manner in dealing with people and issues earned her favor as a caring and compassionate individual who devoted herself to the service of Lynchburg City Schools. Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell has been an able spokesperson and supporter of educational causes. She has been encouraging to students and their families. Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell, a parent herself, was knowledgeable of the many challenges that many students, parents, teachers, and staff members encounter. Throughout her service, she was sensitive to the educational needs of all students and championed new and creative approaches to education. Her questions and comments demonstrated a keen understanding of the topics being discussed. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board pays tribute to Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell, a person of excellence and integrity, who by effort and by example made valuable and far-reaching contributions to public education in Lynchburg, Virginia. Whereas Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell served with distinction as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board for nine years, including chairman and vice chairman, and whereas Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell's keen insight and foresight were qualities of leadership that were appropriate to the needs of Lynchburg City Schools during this period of change, challenge, and growth, and whereas Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell consistently attended school events and programs, she participated on boards and committees as a representative of the school board, and she volunteered her time to help in all capacities throughout the school division, demonstrating her true support of Lynchburg City Schools and all students. And whereas Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell, while on the school board, was a member of the Accelerate Governors STEM Academy Board and contributed to the decisions and approvals for a new Sandusky Middle School and Heritage High School, the hiring of a new superintendent, budgets and support of staff compensation and student achievement, and the new division-wide comprehensive plan. And whereas Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell's dedication to duty during this time contributed to the implementation of new programs, including new one-to-one technology initiative, the beginning process of updating teacher pay scales, and the introduction of the Empowerment Academy Credit Recovery Program to help improve the LCS graduation rate. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia, takes pride in the excellent service that Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell rendered to the operation and successes of the public schools of this community, and be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia, hereby affirms its appreciation to Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell for nine years of devoted service to public education during which she demonstrated courage and tenacity in the pursuit of educational excellence. Her numerous contributions will affect generations to come. The Lynchburg City School Board wishes to commend Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell for the quality of leadership on behalf of the school division and its youth, and for the quality of her stewardship on behalf of the city of Lynchburg, Virginia. Lynchburg City School Board, June 2017. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Board member comments? I'm sure there's no questions.
Comment, but can we do it after?
You can.
Okay.
Yes, you may.
Let's get this approved.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Dr. Dolan Sewell, on behalf of Lynchburg City School Board?
Please accept this resolution of commendation.
Thank you. I have to say that this has been the most valuable and meaningful volunteer experience of my life. I have served with such devoted board members, people who care about the students and the faculty and the staff of this city above anything else. The people who I have served with have not cared about politics. They've cared about the kids, and it's just been quite a privilege. I do have to thank some people. I'll thank Dr. Brabrant for his energy and optimism and his ability to talk me off of a cliff when I thought things were really going south. Dr. McLean, Mr. Copeland, you all in your leadership positions have been so patient to all of us board members, as you've answered, you've presented information, and then you've answered questions about that information, and then you've answered the same questions again and again, as if it was the very first time, and your professionalism and attention to detail has made it very easy to be a board member. And of course, to all of the other staff, leadership, and teachers, I mean, we do this for you all, we do this for the kids, but we want to also create an environment that really is the best workplace for you all. I also have to thank Al Coleman, I'm going to call Al out, who is retired but continues to stick his toes in over and over again, as just an example of what dedicated employees that we have in our school system. An employee who has retired and did not need to look back, but keeps coming back over and over to help us get through one challenge after the next. Al, I've known Al since I was in high school here in the early 80s, and Al has been a great role model to me and mentor, as I adjusted to volunteer work on the board nine years ago. Wendy Sullivan, our board clerk, an angel in disguise, who with her calm demeanor, you would never know what it is that she truly has to deal with day by day. Thank you. And last but not least, my family who are here, now I'm going to try not to. You know, I do this because of my family as well. My mother, my father, were great role models about, you serve your community, that's what you do. My boys, who are students in Lynchburg City Schools, have given me up for many countless meetings and have probably eaten one more baked ziti casserole than they ever want to eat on a Tuesday night. And just last but not least, my beloved husband, Grant, who has borne the weight of my not being available in the business, our family business, he's done time and a half because of my not being there, but he has supported me and our schools all the way. So thank you to my family and to everyone else, and I'm just sad to leave, but I know that Dr. Brennan is going to be a fantastic board member, and good, good things are going to happen, going to continue. So thank you.
Well, there's also a couple follow-on things. There's a certificate of appreciation from the Education Foundation awarded to Regina Dolan Sewell in recognition of her desire to advance Lynchburg City Schools through nine years of dedicated service on the Lynchburg City School Board, her commitment to the Lynchburg City Schools students and teachers, and her generous support of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation.
Thank you.
Dr. Sella, so.
Very good, thank you.
And from the Lynchburg City Schools, this is what it's all about. The gavel.
Golden.
Well, it looks nice. It's not gold, but it's pretty cool.
Well, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Back to work.
Back to work.
Can we make comments, or should we say that for the end of the meeting?
If you'd like to, sure.
I'll just roll into it now and get it done with. Say my thank you. Dr. Dolan Sewell, when I first started as a board member, you were about where I am now in your board journey, and I was usually quiet in the board meetings, but I was kind of taking it all in and listening to the things that the other board members would say, and oftentimes I sat in awe of what you brought to the table. You spoke up for me when some questioned my ability as a rookie board member. None of those people are here, by the way. But you were also willing to pull me aside and brief on proper board protocol when needed. Most recently, I remember former colleague Jenny Por and I would sometimes make eye contact across the table when you would speak on something, and then after the meeting, say just, what are we going to do when she's not here anymore to offer up this wisdom at the meetings? What are we going to do? So as your time is over on the board now, it's come to the end, I want you to know you've made an impact, and I thank you, and I will miss you, and I can only hope someday people will feel the same way about me. What will we do without her? Because you set up very hard shoes to fill, so thank you. Thank you. Can I just say one thing about the board protocol? I was correct, or I was educated many times in my early years, so I just want you to know. It gets passed on, right? Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It brings us to item D2, Update on Schools Denied Accreditation. This is informational item. Dr. McLean, Dr. Brabrant?
Yes, I'd like to give an update on schools denied accreditation. We actually got the state timeline for all things around SOL pass score releases and accreditation. All of that will be coming over the next several months in July, and August, and September. So we don't have final information from the state, but I do want to give you a brief, brief summary of where I think we're going to be with the two schools that are denied. One of these schools has experienced double-digit gains in every single SOL test category, and I believe will have a different accreditation status when things are announced in the next two to three months from the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I'm very, very excited for them. The other school will see growth, at least based on the preliminary data that we have again for both schools, this other school will see growth in three out of the four SOL subject areas. We would love it to have been four out of four, but three out of four is again moving in the right direction. So we're pleased, and of course, we're going to continue to move forward to get to the point where we have all of our schools back at full accreditation. But I will tell you, and I've said it before, this label denied is a false label and a false narrative of failure that is given across the state. It does not at all reflect the hard work of our students, our teachers, our school administrators, and these schools, these two schools are showing what hard work focused on every child by name and by need can do.
Thank you. Board member questions, comments? Okay. All right. Thank you. So that brings us to the consent agenda. It consists of the school board meeting minutes from June 16, Personnel Report, and then Religious Exemption. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. So that brings us to item F, School Board Committee Reports. Are there any committee reports to be made?
Hold on. I have another committee that can report.
I don't think so. I think.
Oh, yes. Sorry. The Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee met, we talked about the adjustments to the salaries for the, for the school nutrition. Forgive me, guys. It was updates to school nutrition. It was the, we covered health insurance. Can you come back to that? I'm sorry.
No, no problem. It's just informal information.
Yeah. Drawing blanks completely from our meeting, our last meeting.
Okay. Sure. We'll move on. So now we're into unfinished business. First is the Policy 2CBR, 2CZR, Guidelines for Community Resource Persons, School Volunteers. This is for information. Dr. Brabrant?
Thank you, Dr. Neillis. I want you to know that our work continues around creating the volunteer policy proposal that I brought to you a couple of months ago. The final piece is dealing with the conditions for those that had committed felonies and wanted to return to volunteer service in our school system. I have a preliminary draft that I have being reviewed now by our legal folks, by our senior leadership team. I am also going to, recognizing a transition that I did not foresee taking place some months ago when I drafted this policy. I will also be including in this review the interim superintendent, Dr. Massey, as I know he and the staff will be charged with implementation of this policy going forward. I do hope to have that wrapped up very shortly, but that's the update that I have for you this evening on that.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Thank you. So now we move to G2, Policy EZF School Nutrition Meal Account Procedures. Mr. Buckles, this is for action tonight.
Good evening. In our last meeting, we presented the draft policy for the school nutrition meal account procedures. Tonight, it's before you for action. Up to this point, we have received no questions, but if you do have any questions, we'll answer it now, and Beth Morris is here that we can also answer any questions you may have on the procedure that's before you for approval for tonight.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments at this point? Dr. Coleman?
Having asked all I needed to ask last week, I would certainly make a motion at this time if it's appropriate.
If there is no other questions or comments, it's certainly appropriate to make a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. That brings us to the G3 Educational Broadband Lease with Clearwire, or the Clearwire, whatever it is. Mr. Buckles?
Likewise, last board meeting, we also brought this lease for the school board. This is a lease where we rent the unused spectrum that we currently have. Currently, we have a proposed agreement that we would like your approval on, that we will rent it to a Sprint. We will get on the rental of that spectrum, which is a big improvement from the amount that we currently got for this lease. Again, if anyone have any questions, either David or myself would answer any questions you may have on the proposed lease.
Okay. So are any questions or comments?
That's correct.
Lease, okay. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
So, okay. There's a motion to approve, second, moving second, and to approve the contract with Sprint lease. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Mr. Buckles, Community Eligibility Provision. This is for information.
Yes, we have some good news on the community eligibility provision. I know as we previously talked about, the other eight schools that we had, one of the requests of the board is when we will be able to add other schools. And Beth Morris is here to present the answer to your question that I think most people will be pleased with.
Okay.
Well, I'm excited to be here tonight, and I'm happy to report to the board and to the Lynchburg community tonight that LCS school nutrition program will expand its operation of the community eligibility provision by adding four schools to the program in school year 1718. Students at Paul Monroe Elementary School, Paul Lawrence Dunbar School for Innovation, Linkhorn Middle School, and Sandusky Middle School will begin to receive universal free breakfast and lunch when they return to school on August 14. With the addition of these four schools to CEP, the school nutrition program will operate a total of 14 schools under the community eligibility provision, providing free meals to nearly 5,450 students in Lynchburg City Schools each day. The addition of the four schools is possible due to the inclusion of Medicaid as a new determinant for direct certification for free and reduced meal eligibility. Virginia applied and was selected as one of seven states to participate in the USDA Demonstration Project to identify and automatically certify students for meal benefits based on the family income and household size reported by the family when applying for Medicaid. The state sent us the first list of Medicaid eligible students on May 4, and after matching the list with our enrolled students, we were able to extend free meal benefits to another 404 LCS students. We also added those students to our direct certification counts, which raised Paul Monroe and all three middle schools to identified student levels needed to implement the community eligibility provisions at those schools. The school nutrition program will provide universal free meals at the 14 schools at no cost to the school division, and the federal funding is sustained for all 14 schools over the next four years, at which time we would be required to reapply for operation under the community eligibility provision. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member questions or comments? Dr. Coleman?
Fine work. The three middle schools are. Fine work, the three middle schools are in, that's great news, 5,450 students, and echo that we're going to work on those who are supposed to pay.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Ms. Carter?
I want to say thank you for your energy and just to go after this.
This is an exciting time for us.
Yes, great, wonderful.
So, right now, this is set for the next four years?
Yes, it is, yes, sir, and those schools that operated for the last two years under community eligibility provision, it's a four-year term, those reset as they, so all schools will now start and have that four-year span.
Okay, all right, very good, okay.
I'll just make one comment, so that means we don't have Bedford Hills and the two high schools. So, someone will be asking, okay, when we're going to do the high schools and when we're going to do Bedford Hills? We have run the numbers on what it would be to include those, and at this point, if we do, it will cost us money because they won't pay for themselves. So, at this point, unless we make the decision to underwrite that, at this point, it's not economically feasible to do that at this point. We don't know what rules are changed later on like it just did for the other schools, but at this point, that's why we don't have the other three schools at this point.
So, and this is no cost to the school division, so this is just, this is just an automatic thing?
That's correct, there's no cost to the school division for these additional three schools.
Okay, very good.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
That brings us to G5, the 2017-2018 applications for federal programs. This is for action tonight, I believe. Yes, Dr. McLean?
Good evening. In our last meeting, we brought forth to you the four applications for federal programs, Title 1A, Title 1D, Title 2A, and Title 3, and so brought for your consideration for approval. At the last meeting, we had mentioned that school divisions are required to submit applications for each program on an annual basis. A reminder that while we build these applications based on estimates from VDOE at this time, and they're due by July 1, we don't get the final actual allocations till usually mid or late October, and then we will need to make amendments to those as necessary once we get the final application. But the plan is due with signature from the superintendent and board chair by July 1 for our plan. So, we're happy to answer any questions you may have for these applications.
Are there any question, board? No? It's the board's pleasure. Okay. Been moved in second to approve the application for federal programs for the 2017-2018 year? All in favor? Aye. No opposed? Thank you. That brings us to agenda item H1, superintendent's contract. On June 1st, Lynchburg City School Board announced that Dr. Scott Brabran, superintendent of schools, had informed the board of his pending appointment as superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools. Dr. Brabran submitted his letter of resignation to the board on June 9th. My recommendation is that the board accept, formally accept the resignation of Dr. Brabran, effective, superintendent of Lynchburg City Schools, effective June 30th, 2017. Is there a motion? To move? Second? Moved in second, any discussion or comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Reposed? Okay. Brings us to item H2, superintendent selection process. So, we need to begin the next steps to consider our superintendent search process. We have several options to pursue, including various search firms, possibly doing it ourselves, you might be able to tell, I'm not very thrilled about that one. But it's, you know, right now, it's, I think it's important for the community to get a sense of where individual board members are in terms of, you know, how we might go forward, and so I'm just going to open it up for comments at this point. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly enjoying looking at all of the material, even as it's continuing to come in from Wendy. My personal opinion, we need a search firm, and I, I'm wanting to know more about the success of the last entity that brought us Dr. Scott Brabran. At the same time, I am partial to Virginia School Board Association that has the benefit of 49 other state associations, working with the same pool of potential applicants with a fee that would be much more reduced and willing to serve us even beyond our selection of the new superintendent. And so, I'm really looking at the Virginia School Board Association amongst all of the pieces that we have here because they have a very vested interest in the outcome of what we're doing here in this school division. And so, I'm looking at all of them, but we are a part of the Virginia School Board Association, and it would appear to me that we benefit from them in any number of ways, and their services are available to us, and certainly would hope that amongst all of our considerations that there would be consideration for the SBA.
Ms. Morrison?
Thank you for those comments. I've been reviewing all of the information that we have received and making charts about who will do what, and I think it's very apparent that we want our stakeholders, our parents, the faculty, the administration, and even the students to have a part and a say in this process, that we are transparent and that their voice is heard. And to me, that's really important when we look at the documents and what the proposals say they will do, and how involved we can make the community to get the best superintendent for this school division. I just want to make sure that when we look at the proposals, that we are looking at what they say they will do.
I would sort of second that, I have a whole bunch of little tabs here I've created already, and most of them are pointing to the, where they talk about the community involvement and what they can do, and online community involvement for people who can't make it to whatever we decide to have out in the public, because there will be people, regardless of what time you do things, that won't be able to make it. So, I encourage all board members to look diligently over everything that's given to us and really make a correct decision in what everybody has to offer, and, of course, be diligent in cost and taking all those things into account, but, you know, if we can get another superintendent who will keep us on a, on this forward path that we're on now, following Dr. Brabran, then it would probably be money well spent.
Dr. Jones, over.
I can just, speaking from the last process that we went through, superintendent selection process, the thing that really made that one firm stand out, which I was pleased to see that a number of other firms are now offering it, which is the community outreach and stakeholder investment. I really think that's, that's critical. We have, under Dr. Brabran's leadership, developed a really, you know, some community involvement where stakeholders are asked for their opinions, and it would be a shame not to continue that in my, my viewpoint.
Well, I'll finish up, I mean, I concur with that, it's, there are different, there are different routes that we can go, go down, but I think certainly it's my intent to figure out the best way to get public input from the various stakeholders, not, not just from the community at large, but teachers and staff, and students too, so, anyway, okay, thank you. There'll be, this is obviously not a quick process, and, you know, when it become, when there's, when it's time to make an announcement, you know, we will let people know what's going on. Brings us to H3, grading and report cards. Dr. McLean?
So, tonight, bring forth to you as information at this point, some proposed updates to grading and reporting in our schools for K to 12, and so I want to share a presentation with you on this. So, why are we proposing updates to grading and reporting with you this evening? And there's really two reasons that rise to the top. One is the desire to increase consistency of what a grade indicates for student learning, and another way of saying it is, a B at one school should mean a B at another school should mean a B at another school, and frankly, sometimes it's not even just at a school level, next door classrooms, a B should be a B, should be a B. And so, the consistency of what that indicates. The other is continue to work to have closer alignment with grading to what is expected of students to know and be able to do. So, for example, what goes into creating a grade should align with what students should know for that course and that subject, and then continue to work to increase that alignment. So, those are two big reasons that we've engaged in this effort. Why now are we looking to make some updates? So, as, as history, we've had updates about, starting in my awareness, about five years ago, Al Coleman led some committee, a committee with this. When I was in my first year in this role, tried to pick up the baton from where Al had led those groups to also look at what we may do, but it's really tricky. Grading is a complicated subject. Teachers have heavy investment in terms of the way that that should work. Parents are looking for certain things in grades, and so it is a very complicated task. And so, we've had previous efforts, and we haven't been able to, my metaphor on this is it's rolling the ball up the hill, and you have to have enough momentum to get that, and because it's such a giant project, we, those have stalled in the past. But we continue to have teachers and parents asking us for improvements in the way that grading occurs, and as we continue to work to get better and better, get better at getting better with student achievement and differentiating for students, looking for grading to help facilitate that process, so it's more specific to each child by name and by need. So, tonight, we're sharing this information, and it is informational tonight, but it's really for two purposes. One is so you understand the content and rationale of what some of this, some of the work of a current task force has proposed, and also to determine your support for us moving forward with implementation of what we would call Phase 1. And so, I'm going to detail a little bit of what that involves. So, the proposals that we'll highlight for you this evening, what contributed to that? Well, starting with the grading committee that Al Coleman led about five years ago, the grading task forces of two years ago, we launched an elementary and secondary grading task force this year. It was, we put that out to a lot of different staff stakeholder groups, and we ended up with, it was approximately 12 to 15 members on the elementary task force, about 20 on the secondary task force. We then also shared and got input from the superintendent's parent advisory council to get what were the sort of key areas for them with grading. We then, as we continue to develop proposals and drafts of those, got input from principals, central office staff, and advisory teams we have ongoing for, that are comprised of teachers in our schools. And then we put a survey out a couple of weeks ago to all LCS employees as well to get input. So, thus far, that's what contributed to the proposals we have. So, I mentioned before, the reason we haven't been able to necessarily move this past the initial kind of theory or design phase before is because of the complicated topic and high investment from teachers, have different viewpoints on this. What we think this year, what we've taken as a slightly different approach this year is the idea of trying to have it be a solar of all or nothing, is to break this into phases, and what would be reasonable along different steps of the way, and then have these task forces be ongoing so that we kind of take smaller bites and make adjustments before another phase would be implemented. So, what Phase 1 would involve, I'm going to talk about this at the elementary level and the secondary level. We're up to proposal 4.0, if you will, because we've had a lot of modifications and input and feedback. But what would be involved in Phase 1? And when I say Phase 1, this really means propose to start this coming year. And so, a few key points. One is, we've heard that while we need to continue to focus on those, those aspects of learning that are not just achievement, that if you think in the literature today when we talk effort, there's grit, there's these other variables that are important for student success going forward, right now, what those are in a report card for elementary school are character traits, and a teacher's asked to grade honesty, asked to grade kindness. Those are very difficult to make concrete, and so, a lot of our input from our teachers has been, can we make those more concrete, have a sort of rubric to guide folks on what that looks like, so that when it's communicated to parents, it has more clarity to it. So, this would require some work to develop those rubrics and, and to share, and to do the training that's needed for teachers. We would also look to have some comments built in for behavior. There's also communication that should occur about how a child's doing, obviously, outside of a report card, but to, but to modify some of the way that we capture that, to move from character traits to what we'd call effort, perseverance, those sorts of things that are really life skills beyond. The other is to include a reading level on our report card. Right now, with reading, we have a grade, but it doesn't indicate what level a student is reading proficiently, and we thought that's an important piece of information for parents to be aware of. So, for example, is a third, a third grader may have a particular grade because they can determine the main idea of a paragraph, but in determining that main idea, they may be reading something at a first grade level, or a third grade level, or a fifth grade level. So, in addition to a grade that typically goes with the skill, wanting to have what indicates what that student's reading level is, so that we are more accountable and communicative with parents about where a student is. As you know, there's a lot of research of students aren't reading on grade level by third grade, that there's, that that really diminishes their chances for success in the future. So, it's kind of increasing our own accountability and transparency about where students are, and we'd use a combination of current instruments we have to communicate that reading level. Other elements at elementary, kindergarten teachers currently complete two separate report cards. There's what's called the nine weeks assessment, and then there's what they do for the regular report card in infinite campus. Really would be looking is to, is to blend some of those so that we're still communicating to parents how students are doing on knowing specific skills, but it becomes a little bit more standards-based. And what I mean by that is if in math, you're supposed to know how to count to a certain number, you're supposed to do some basic addition, that we're communicating at the level that parents receive information, are they doing that or not? And, and so that we would do that in Phase 1 at kindergarten, we would look in the future based on how we learn that works at kindergarten, and potentially doing that in some other grade levels. One of the pieces of feedback we heard from our parents was that when there were the changes to the grading scale several years back, it went from third grade up. So, what happened was an A became a 90 to 100 at third grade, but in first and second grade, it didn't change, and so there the letters used are EMPU, and E is still 94 to 100. So, the thought was, it's almost like, can we go back and make those match up a little bit more closely to the way the ABCs? Now, there's four versus five, so we have to figure that out, but at least at the top end, that those become a little bit more, more consistent when you go from second to third. The other is increasing consistency across a grade level team in a school, and you'll hear this when I talk about secondary in just a moment. Here's the dilemma. We have, we have this need to balance, on one hand, teachers wanting to have ownership and an ability to use their professional judgment with how a grade should be determined. On the other hand, we have a desire and a need for a B to be a B to be a B, and there to be consistency. Striking that balance is a very tricky proposition, because if you, if you mandate very, very specific procedures of how a grade gets determined, you leave out some of the professional judgment that needs to occur. But if you leave it completely open, you end up with things very inconsistent. So, our main move in Phase 1 is at a team level that there becomes consistency in the way that grading is approached, and the conversations occur there, with some basic frameworks on there. So, for example, how often or in what situations can you retake a test where you may not have performed as well as you want? And on the one hand, you'll hear the argument, well, if you let students retake as many times as they want, that may not be real life that you always have that chance to retake, and there can be situations where students don't give their all because they know they've got to retake. And on the other hand, I think real life does include chances for some retakes. So, trying to take some balance, and the grade level team determining that, and as we'll show in the secondary, we set a minimum retakes, and then the team would decide if that becomes higher. The other is to eliminate extra credit that's not... The other is to eliminate extra credit that's not tied to the content standards of the course. I say this as a real extreme, but it, I have seen it, and I'll say I've seen it in another school division, of getting extra credit for bringing in a box of tissues, because the class has run out of a box of tissues. That really, while we do want students to contribute to what's needed in a classroom, that really doesn't belong as part of the grade. And so when we talk about extra credit, that being tied to really what you understand within the course. So elementary and Phase One, those are really the main components, and you'll see in your packet that you have the proposal, I've just highlighted them. You have the proposals that detail some more specifics, including what specific steps we would take this summer to act, to be ready to implement some of these, these components in the fall. The secondary, what would happen at secondary at Phase One? So the main sort of, in a nutshell, this is about going from where every teacher uses their judgment of what's best for the grades, to working to, at the team level, there getting to be some consistency, with a few parameters. One, and we've had lots of debate on this one, but it was to establish, in essence, how much of a grade should be what you know, versus how much of the grade should be how much you've grown, versus how much of the grade should be how hard you're trying. And what you notice in elementary, we've separated out, if you will, what you know is your, basically your academic grade, and then you have that effort grade. Secondary, that's a little trickier, and where we have landed with that in this proposal is that we would have an established sort of breakdown, that 80% of the grade would be proficiency. It'd be, what do you know? What is it you've shown in terms of your knowledge and skill with that course? 20% of the grade then would be comprised of effort, which also would include growth. So that is, it could be how much you've grown from where you are, because one of the tricky pieces in this is what if there is a student who was several grade levels behind in something, and has made tremendous progress? But the proficiency doesn't necessarily indicate that, because that's at the grade level standard, and some of that effort piece could show, could show some of what's happened there. And then the other, the other side of the coin, there's a time that a student may know the course, know the stuff rock solid, but isn't really giving much effort in the course to the way that's going. And if you think how that plays out in life in the future, you've got to kind of have both of those going forward. So we established, this is all from the input of teachers, we changed this around different times, of an 80/20. Within that, homework would be a maximum of 10%. That homework completion is, is part of that 20 towards the total 100. But homework's a tricky one, and there are places that have eliminated homework from being part of grades. But at this point where we are, thinking that of setting a cap of 10%. Now, still, you have to do the homework to learn things that are going to contribute to your proficiency, so it'll show up in other places. But completion of assignments, those kinds of things. We would have consistent policies around late work and absences. A little bit more of that detail is in the proposal you have, and try, working so that we are not penalizing students for absences that are really not things in their control. A skipping class would be something that is more in their control, so we've tried to delineate a little bit around, around the way that would work. And then finally, in secondary, for those teams, and we do have some teams eager to look at how you might calculate grades a little bit differently from a standards-based perspective. And when I say standards-based perspective, I don't mean getting rid of ABCDs. But what I do mean is, give you an example. Let's say you are doing an assessment, and this isn't exactly how it'd work, but I'll share for just, for example. Let's say there are two standards in math that you're covering, and eight questions are on one standard, and two questions are another standard. You may get an, you may get a, an 80, and for one student, that might mean they got six of the eight of one right, and two out of two on the other right. But for another student, it might mean they got all of one standard right, and didn't get any of the questions in the other standard right. It just goes into how you calculate what you know that's expected in that course. So piloting some of just how, a lot of that is almost more assessment creation. As mentioned with the elementary, eliminating the extra credit not tied to the content standards of the course, and establishing practice for retakes. What we said specifically in the proposal was that there'd be, there'd be a minimum of one retake per quarter. Students do have to show effort, though, to be able to gain that retake. So in other words, it wouldn't be, you know what, I don't want to really give effort on this one, I know I got one to, to have the retakes, so there's still effort that is shown on that. But then the team can raise that beyond the one retake, and trying to find a balance. There's a lot of divisions that have grappled for how to, how to hit that right balance. But I do believe right now, we have grading practices that really run the gamut. This is to try to move in Phase One towards a little bit more consistency, while maintaining that teacher professionalism. So I share this, and I'll stop here in just a second for questions and comments. What we're really asking for tonight is if you provide feedback, if you provide your support for moving forward, really to do some of these pieces for next, for the beginning of the school year, we would need to start, start moving now on getting ready for a lot of these things. And then what would happen is, on the June, July 11th meeting, I would bring you policies that are specifically related to this. But at this point, I want to share with you the direction of the proposals that our task force have put forth, and get your, get your feedback.
Mr. Morrison?
You said that you put out a survey a couple of weeks ago. Do you have any results from that survey?
We did. And I know it wasn't a huge response.
Except the school was out.
It was, you know, we've been, yes. And I mean, we did put out other ones along the way, for different groups. So we have a representative from every school
Okay.
that sits on our, what we call SLS advisory team for elementary and secondary. They were asking colleagues along the way, but what we realized is people operate that in different ways, so we wanted to, again, put it out ourselves to a broader group. So yeah. So in those, it was a mix. The, the main comments that we got back were ones that were like, it's about time we need to do these things. And then there were the main comments of concern were around, you're taking away teacher And, and feeling like it could be a micromanaged kind of system. So.
I do appreciate taking away the extra credit grade. Never did like it, but, so, like that.
Ms. Carter?
Regarding the 20% effort, that's almost like the elementary type of, you know, characteristics. So how do you, how can, how is that going to be subjective, I mean, objective, objectively looked at versus, because someone may be in the class and really putting forth the best effort they can, but it may not appear to be.
What we would look to do is to create, if you will, sort of some look fours of indicators of what that would include. This would be a work in progress, so I don't want to, you know, overstate sort of how clear that's going to be. The reality right now is every teacher creates that on their own. The reality right now is it is subjective from, and I say that, there are some, some teacher teams that work together on their own for that, but it is, right now, very subjective. So it's starting to move those conversations at a team level, to try to figure out where we get some of that coordination, and we would provide some suggested look fours.
And is it correct that the, the maximum of 10% of the homework that's included in that 20%, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I guess if you think of a total of 100, let me say this actually another way. Total of 100, each team should figure out what the different breakdowns of what constitutes that 100, okay? Within that, 80 of that 100 should be achievement-related ones. So they, they may work on a variety of assessments, projects, other things like that. The 20, so the 10 is half of that 20, 10 of that whole 100. And the team, again, would identify what that is. Now, that 10 is a max, so that could be less if the team chooses. Some of the comments we've heard from teachers that are tricky, now this varies a little by grade level, is when homework is a grade, one of the pieces that's tricky is that can be very dependent upon home situations that influence that. There are times where it's not clear who has done that homework. And so some of the pieces are, that felt like there should at least be a max. And like I said, some divisions have moved from eliminating that. I feel like there's still a responsibility of completion, and when you think in some courses, some of what that is, is you're reading a book that you're coming to class the next day to discuss. We've talked about flipped or blended instruction, where students are doing some prior work, so they're ready to engage with the teacher, and the teacher giving them feedback the next day. So it's a tricky one to balance, and that's where the committees, the task force suggested that balance.
Mr. Polly?
I kind of piggybacking off that, that maximum of 10% for Phase One, as you were projecting, I know it's not set as strong for Phase Two, are you, are you holding tight to that 10%? Or do you see it, do you see that 10% changing? I'm just trying to see where, what you're, what you're projecting.
We did not address in Phase Two or Three, a change to the homework percentage specifically. But what's intended in each of these, and we've called them phases intentionally rather than year, because Phase One may be more than a year.
Right.
And what we want to do is kind of say, so how's this going? Do we need to make some adjustments? And so Phase Two and Three would be a little bit more, think of them a little bit more in pencil than in pen. But if you look at some of these, if you look in Phase Three on the secondary, it's considering the role of effort and growth in 21st century skills. Does that become part of what you look at towards effort? So when I, someday 21st century skills will become an old term, because we'll be in the 22nd century. But that is often things like, what's your collaboration skills, your creativity skills, your problem-solving skills? There are some divisions that have been going in that direction, so that would be something that would at least be something to consider in the future.
Ms. Snyder?
How much do you find that teachers are doing more than 10% for homework? Because just a quick glance at Infinite Campus of my kids here, I pulled it up, and, you know, across the board, it seems to be about 10%. So I mean, are there, and that's elementary and secondary. Are there a lot of teachers that do more than 10% for homework?
And I don't have-
So that we have to adjust this?
Sure.
Is that something going on, or?
I don't have a specific data point for you, but I would think that 10% is probably pretty common. Sometimes it may show up in something that is not listed as a homework percentage, that it's a project that you've had do over time. But I don't know specifically, but the 10 came from the, came from the task force as they, and I think a lot of that was based on, on practice that a lot of them were using.
And then I think you mentioned in it, but there's going to be some room, a little bit of wiggle room for teachers, because I can also think of examples where there are some teachers who don't give homework, so there's not a homework grade necessarily.
Yeah. So the 10 was a cap, not a requirement. The thought was that that's developed at the team level, so there, so if you have two teachers both teaching fourth grade math, that really it should be a similar way that that is calculated as part of the grade across those two classes. So really, it's asking for there to be more collaboration, so there's consistency at that school in that grade level, or in that course.
Good.
Dr. Dolan Toole?
I was going to say, I've noticed at the high school level, just in my limited sample, very limited sample, that math and foreign language seem to both have more than 10% homework for the grade. But I also can see where, for those particular classes, it makes sense because of the repetitive nature of doing, you know, calculations and things to try to understand how it works, and for foreign language, needing to practice vocabulary and do translations. So is it possible that there could be subgroups, or, you know, classes where maybe 10% more than that is needed?
We did have representatives in those different content areas on the task forces. What, what we heard, and I'll just, my recollection of some of the foreign language conversations, is students need to do a fair amount of practice. But it's, it's the accountability not around that you did the practice, it's the accountability that you then come to class showing the results of that practice.
Okay.
So it kind of comes into play a little bit more on that, in that.
So as this transition change, you know, comes through, some kids who are already used to a certain way of grading might need to be educated, like, look, you're not going to have as much homework required for foreign language, but all these Quizlets and things that are online, this is what's going to help you, you really need to do it if you're going to succeed in the class.
Sure. And isn't that really real life, too? It's, you need to do the, you need to do the preparation to be ready to show it when you, when you most need to, so just moving that.
And then a question I have about the elementary level. How common is it for itty-bitties, you know, these first and second graders to have A through F grades? I mean, is that something that other districts are doing?
Yeah.
It looks like, because it looks like that's what you all are proposing.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're not proposing moving that to the little.
No.
Okay.
No.
I misunderstood that then.
Sure. Yeah, so let me clarify. Yeah, and a lot of divisions take third grade as where, third or fourth grade is where the shift goes to become ABCD. So right now, we have EMPU, and please, I don't think I'm going to remember it, the excelling, mastering, progressing, unsatisfactory, I believe, are what those stand for. But those have established percentages.
Oh, okay.
The E, established percentage, is 94 to 100.
Okay.
Whereas we have an A, starting at third grade, that is 90 to 100.
Okay.
And so the question we had for parents was, why does my first grader have a higher threshold for getting an E than my fourth grader has for getting an A?
Thank you. Now I understand. Okay, got it. Thank you.
I guess in terms of, you know, tying to the standards, that, you know, and some of the reports that I've seen, you know, I would, kids with getting Cs aren't passing SOLs. And it, I think it would be good, just my opinion, if there's some way to correlate however the grades are determined, that, you know, I mean, I think a student getting a C should be passing SOLs. I mean, maybe 70% of them or so, you know, I don't know. I mean, if there's some, but it seems like that's, that's a part that's missing, that I would personally like to see, that, that whatever the grading scales are set up, and how they're ranked, that, you know, if the kid's getting a C, that you're 90% confident he's going to pass, or she's going to pass the SOL for that subject.
Absolutely. And that went to sort of that second point, is what is the rigor of the grade compared to other measures of that?
Right. And that, but I mean, that, I think, might still get the teachers some flexibility to set how they're, they're doing the grading and that kind of thing, but there's still the accountability. And, go ahead. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the point you just made. Grades are serious. They mean everything, and you have to work for them. And I'm glad that we're doing this. While this discussion is going on, I still am concerned about grading, because I've always feared the subjectivity of it. With project-based learning emphasis in many of the classes, and the fact that when people get out into the global economy, knowing what to do with what they've learned is probably more important than whatever they learned. Because we see people with all As across the country and can't find jobs, or keep them when they get them. So when you talk about this 20% effort, I'm glad Ms. Carter said what she said, but is there a part of this that you can measure around the ability to know whether or not a person can take what they've learned to the next level? Do they demonstrate in the class that not only do they understand the material, but they are likely to know what to do with that material when they get out there? And if we aren't doing that in the classroom, we're doing a disservice to our kids, because just getting all As
Right.
isn't necessarily guaranteeing that in a global economy, they will succeed.
Agreed. I mean, it's not just knowing it, it's applying it. And I think in many ways, that actually goes into your proficiency, part of your achievement, part of your grade. We've been working and providing training, and part of what you'll hear in the gifted presentation this evening in a moment, too, is about trying to push the problem-based learning, so that what you're asking students to do is show what they know and how it solves problems and addresses those components. So part of it is in that achievement or proficiency part of the grade, of what kinds of tasks teachers are asking kids to do to show what they know. And then the other part is in figuring out, what are those look fours for effort? So it goes in both of those.
So I have a follow-on with phasing in the, the change in grading. I have, I'm worried about the additional load on the teachers of trying to adapt and figure out this new, whatever the rubric standard is, and-
And, and if it gets phased in and things get changed, then the parents are going to be confused about what's going on. And so I'd like to make sure that it's, if it, that whatever's done is controlled. I guess is not quite the right word, but. And, and I was going to suggest that maybe as part of that is that there's a group within the school that they maybe take some kids and kind of do a, you know, well, this is our model, these are what the grades would have been throughout the year. And just as a, some feedback to guide the process and, and not necessarily implement something like right off the bat. When I, when I look at the proposal here, it's, I, I would like to see, you know, a little more definite, definitiveness of, more definite description of what's actually going to be done. I mean, it seems, what I would say, this, this strikes me as a little soft about, we're going to look at this and kind of figure it out as we go along. And, and I get that, that's fine. But, but if that's what's going to happen, I think we need to phase it in slowly. And that, that maybe you kind of do some, like ghost grades or whatever for students to see how actually it would work out. Those wouldn't actually go in their, their transcripts. Does that make sense? I mean, what am I?
So what kind of pilot group?
A who?
Like a demonstration group or a pilot group or something?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
One, one thought of just listening to what you said, let me just say one comment before that. We've been playing and looking at and exploring grades for five years of me being here. I wanted to do it right away, then I turned to Al in the first place, we've got it, we've got it. It is the, the Wild West remains with grading. I think there's really a place to help improve student outcomes by being a little more consistent. Now, the, the whole other extreme is taking away teachers. Grading is a big part of teaching, how to grade. What is giving parameters without taking away teacher professionalism and teacher autonomy? This is just trying to begin to skim the surface. One thought the board could consider is that these, in Phase One, these could be voluntary best practices in Year One. Some teachers would jump on board and do it, some would not, some teams would and wanted. And you would get your, those that adopted it, and your control group, those that did not after the first year. And then next year, Phase One could be what would be policy for all teachers. I mean, I'm just taking that idea to say, you could-
Well, my, my concern is not so much about what, what, what information we get, but what information you get. And that, that, that's not, you know, the exercising the, the students and the teachers.
You want to know what would have happened with the grades if they hadn't adopt those policies, if they had retained their old-
Right. Is, is the change going to be effective in, in the direction that you want to go?
Yeah. Part of what you named and what others have named is, do grades give me a prediction of eventual student success on standardized assessments? Will an A or a B in an AP class mean that the likelihood for a kid to get a three or better on the AP exam is 50%, 70%, 90%? Will an A or a B in a third grade English class mean that there's a 90% likelihood the kid will pass the SOL? So it's trying to start to get at those parameters. I'll just tell you my own experience as a teacher. I gave homework at 35 or 40% my first year in high school. And I did it with my adaptive ESOL kids, and, and everybody was getting Ds and Fs on the homework. And I'm like, you know what? You're just, you're not used to the American system yet, you've got to work hard and do your homework. When I dug in, by second semester, it was Dr. Brabrian, we can't read the books you've given us. I have home, I've got to take care of my child, I don't have time for the two hours of homework you assigned. If you would teach more in class with me and help us work in groups, we could learn and do this together. So it's some way of trying to create, I learned it on my own, and some teachers have their own journey versus some best practices that teachers and teams can talk about at the beginning of the year. What should it look like in first grade at the school? What should it look like in the biology class? And that there's some sort of commonality. Trying to get it right is very hard, and that's why we wanted to bring it to you, to hear what your concerns are. It's, this isn't final yet, we're looking at what the tweaks should be. But I do think doing, moving forward in some fashion with some of these, I already heard some consensus about the extra credit, shouldn't it really be around Kleenex tissues? I mean, there are things I think we can start to do to get our teachers thinking about greater consistency in how we do grading without really eating away at teacher autonomy and professionalism.
Ms. Morrison.
I'd like to echo what you said. Looking at what has to be done between now and the beginning of school and training teachers, when they're, they're stressed about the number of new teachers that are going to be in their building, the mentoring, the, we're placing a lot on our teachers. And then to, to bring this in, and even though there's some phasing in, I think it's a lot. I think they, they need time to, to learn it, to be able to have questions.
Dr. Senna.
Yeah, but the question that comes to my mind is, is how much is this, whatever system of grading is, is adopted, changes what actually happens in the classroom? Because we've already imposed quite a bit on teachers with the, you know, the visitation and the, you know, the, how they do things with an eye on improving test scores. And if it doesn't change it a whole lot, that does give you an opportunity to do some sort of quasi-experiment where you could look at just what the raw materials of learning are in those scores and how they might be predictive of SOL.
You'd rather see it as a pilot, like a voluntary pilot by school, by grade?
Well, the problem with making it voluntary or going with the early adapters, as you suggested, is you're introducing quite a bit of positive bias, I think. Because those are the more enthusiastic teachers who are wanting to do it, who would embrace it, or who are maybe more capable and nimble of making that adjustment. And so you might get a lot of false positives. That's what I would caution against.
Ms. Carter.
I am for, I, because, because grading can be so subjective. And then if you have a child that misbehaves, maybe you don't give him or her the grade that another child that's better behaved. I just, whatever we use, it needs to be more objectively graded. And to me, that's getting more at the, what you're presenting. But I'm also concerned that we have a lot of new principals, teachers, and sometimes things just become so overwhelming, telling, not one more thing. So how can we slow it down a little bit? Is that possible to slow it down a little bit? To give everyone time to really grasp the information, to really have the teams looking at all of the options? But yet instead, make it a path so we're going to try to implement.
Dr. Dolan-Soul.
First off, I just appreciate what Dr. Senna said about, you know, you're a very biased sample, if you only go with the volunteers. And I'm very concerned as to what Ms. Carter said about the number of new principals and Ms. Morrison, the number of new teachers. Now, if you were going to start this out as a pilot, I would hope you might consider, you know, the buildings where you already have established principals, and perhaps those buildings which have the fewest amount of new teachers. Just something to think about.
Okay. Can I ask for a little bit of clarity from the feedback on which things are more along the pilot phase or the, the sort of ghost parallel kind of calculation and which aren't? So, for example, the ones that strike me that aren't really a pilot piece would be things like the extra credit.
Right.
That seems like a pretty straightforward kind of piece.
Right.
The EMPU, A, B, C, D, F, that's, those sound like they're a little bit more concrete shifts. The, I mean, the re, the reading level could be calculated, I mean, we can calculate that now, it's just whether that's actually put on the report card or not. The parts that sound more like they have a different calculation that could create a different grade are more the secondary 80/20 kind of piece. But I just want to make sure I'm hearing you all right in terms of which-
Well, and then when you start talking about trying to set the standard for the group, and how are you doing that? And, just to make sure it gets rolled out smoothly. You know, that, that we, there have been a number of programs, initiatives that, you know, we've approved, that the teachers are, you know, and all with the idea of trying to get scores, you know, improve test scores. And I just, I personally just want to make sure that whatever is done, that it's done gracefully. So that, you know, that, you know, especially the beginning of the year, and you've got a new system, let's say you roll it out through the whole division, there's going to be a lot of clunking and clangy and gear stripping. And then we're going to have to go back and revamp things. And it's just a matter of just introduce it, let it spread out, and a little more slowly. So just don't want to burden the-
Understand.
Yeah. Definitely.
Dr. Coleman.
Dr. McLean, with the effort piece, that's really intriguing to me. But, you know, the test scores are important, this board knows that. But maybe I'm just tiring of just always just being concerned about test scores. I, I like that effort piece. Get all of the subjectivity out of it. What would it look like where we consider effort? And not only immediate gratification with a test score, but how that translates into life, and really helping that child to prepare him or herself for the future that they will have. How, what does that look like in getting the 20% of effort? I'm, I'm very concerned about what does that, what does, what does that look like? Because for some kids, showing effort might be one level or easy to do, and others, just being able to get themselves in the classroom may be a huge effort.
Dr. Senna.
I was going to say, it seems to me that you have the information at hand, that you could do some kind of analysis to, with the grades you already are doing. I, I understand, part of, one component of this is just to provide more information. Your student's good at reading, but hey, here's your third grader reading at a fifth grade level. That's additional information value added. So that's one component. But the other component is this consistency. You want a B to be a B to be a B and similar. You know, it should have the face validity that a student who gets a C overall in a course ought to be able to pass that subject in an SOL. So you have those kinds of grades, and now you'll have the scores when they all come in. So you could do some kind of analysis that, a statistical analysis that then would make, show you where the deviations are as a way of, and, and again, it's more, it's a more quantified approach, but it's not perfect, because there's still the subjectivity in the grade. There's still a lot of noise in grade data, because you're, you're already aware that you have this, or you perceive that you have this inconsistency issue. But if you could look at how predictive classroom grades are of SOL scores, and then look at the, look at the other predictors of that, whether it's the classroom, the tenure of the teacher, the race and ethnicity of the student, some of those components you're already looking at in terms of how students score, but do those, do those factors also show up in, in variance in grading? I'm not saying it very well, because I have to look at the data. But I think, I think you have data in hand that you could kind of look at that, and that might give you some guidelines as to where, where your problem really is.
It might, you might be able to pick out the ones where that really were, that correlation's really strong in that cohort or school or whatever, and then you can kind of take a deep dive into there and see what's going on.
Yeah. Because if you find that all these other external correlates are more predictive of SOL and performance than classroom grade, then I think you have a problem.
Right. I, I think you've given us a lot of feedback, that we have time to go back. And I know you're saying, well, my time is limited, but I have enough time to debrief from this meeting and work with our senior leadership to figure out what the next steps should be. I definitely hear you saying with all the change and everything else going on, new faces in some schools, that trying to go slow to go fast is one of the things that is important. And I like the idea about looking at what we have already statistically. We might just be in a place where we might be able to provide more data to our teachers who are able then with that data to begin to move toward some of the best practices we're already outlining in this phasing. So. Can I, is it, knowing time's limited, can I just share my takeaways and see if that meets with the board's approval? I'm hearing that it seems to be, go forward with the EMPU, A, B, C, D alignment, to go forward with some guidelines on extra credit that has to be tied to the content. I think I heard providing reading levels, just additional information. That would probably be what we do at this point, while we're encouraging teams to work together more and look what, be more aware of each other's grading practices, and we look to look at some more statistical analysis. We would hold off for implementing this fall, but, but deepen sort of the parallel work to develop around the kindergarten piece, around the effort piece, see that 80/20 and how that might play out compared to what people are doing now, hold off on the retake part, that those kind of get pushed till a little bit later. Would that match what you all have suggested?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to H4 Lynchburg City Schools Plan for Gifted Education. Dr. McLean.
I'm going to call up Ms. Boils, previously known as Ms. Bowling, but recently married. So Ms. Boils will share update on where we are with gifted education, really from two viewpoints. One is just what, thank you, what has, an update on what we've done this year to implement the plan that the board had approved a year ago. And also just talk about some tweaks to the plan. The state does not require approval of the plan at the state level, but it requires the school board to approve any adjustment to the plan. So some tweaks that we would make from lessons learned this year.
Good evening. As we go through this plan, there are several different goals that Kathleen set out last year. And so as I go through each goal, I'm going to talk about the outcomes that we had that we were supposed to have met for this school year, and elaborate a little bit on the work that we did in the department for gifted. Goal one is around using identification data to review and revise our identification process. This year, we held, we noticed that a lot of our questions and concerns around the gifted process were just simply about knowing what it was. It was clarity of information from the parent perspective. So what we did this year was each lead instructional coach provided at least one information session for parents at their elementary school. And then I held two for parents across the division at the Go Center, both in the winter. I also created, as a result of those information sessions, an FAQ brochure that basically walked through all of our processes for identification of gifted and the levels of service that we provide. Those were distributed to all the elementary schools for them to house in their front office, and it was also posted to the LCS website. Both the school and division gifted committees implemented the holistic case study process that's in the gifted plan currently for identification for academically gifted students this year. One thing that we learned this year, especially at the division level, that we would like to include for future consideration is students who have come extreme, overcome extreme obstacles such as homelessness or multiple moves many times during the year, but are still able to achieve at high levels. We recognize that these students show great potential if they are able to overcome and Goal two was to identify students with potential through the Scholars with Promise program. Our lead instructional coaches were trained by Dr. Carol Horn and Kirsten Maloney, who have had great success with their Young Scholars program in nurturing potential of underrepresented students. So we brought them here to train our coaches. They shared all of their strategies, lesson plans, literature, pieces of literature that we could use with these students that would help nurture that potential. So at each school, each elementary school, the lead instructional coaches had a designated primary grade, so either kindergarten first or second, that they were to implement at least three of the nine strategies. And then as we move forward for next year, as those students matriculate, the coaches will train the next grade level on three new strategies. So by the time the kids have been through this program three years, they will have been instructed on all nine strategies. Another piece of this is that the school community, the principal and the counselor are involved in mentoring these students, and this will be a- are involved in mentoring these students, and this will be a mentorship that lasts until these students graduate. Some of these students may end up being identified as gifted, some may not, but we still continue to whisper in those students' ears that they can achieve at high levels, just like other students can. Goal three, which I'm really excited about, is we developed identification criteria for our visual and performing arts program for grades three through 12. We used the regulations set out by the Virginia Department of Education for gifted, and other school divisions who are currently identifying students in the visual and performing arts as kind of a guide for what we were going to use for our identification criteria. So beginning next year, students will be identified as gifted in the visual and performing arts with programming beginning in the 18, 19 school year. What was so exciting about this is I got to work with Mr. Al Coleman and a group of fine arts teachers, both elementary and secondary, and we worked together probably a half a dozen times this year, coming up with, what was our vision? What do we think was important in recognizing giftedness in the visual and performing arts? And then what do we see five, 10 years down the road as being the programming, and then how do we baby step to get there? Goal four was around rigorous and research-based program options that challenge students identified as gift, with giftedness. This year, our instruction of gifted students included instruction in the regular classroom through differentiation, our gifted pull-out service with our lead instructional coaches, GO Center, which is our full-day, full-time program for the gifted students. And then we're also continuing to work with our middle school to strengthen the areas in, in the grades six through eight, to make sure that we are not just dropping our middle, our kids when they get to sixth grade, that we're continuing to support them. So some things that we put into place were cluster grouping, which means that our students who are identified as gifted were grouped together in small, in classes in about, you know, five to seven, so that they would have like-minded peers. It also allows the teacher the ability to differentiate more effectively for those students. Lots of cooperative collaboration, those kind of examples. Problem-based learning was something that Dr. Coleman brought up earlier when Dr. McLean was talking. So this year, in middle school especially, that was a huge initiative. We brought in Dr. Kelly Hedrick, who is a principal at a gifted 2-8 school in Virginia Beach, to give two full-day trainings on problem-based learning for our middle school teachers of advanced core content classes to kind of give them that basis. And then for next year, I have gathered a team of mostly middle school teachers who have committed to being on this problem-based learning leadership team, and they have some commitments such as promising to implement at least one problem-based lesson or unit per quarter. We will meet regularly to discuss those, make tweaks, some of the outcomes that we're hoping to have from that is kind of a helpful tips sheet for other teachers who want to implement this, to create a database of PBL lessons and units for others to use in the future. Also, along the lines of problem-based learning and inquiry, we are embedding overarching concepts into all elementary PARGODs. So there is a section of our PARGODs that has our big ideas, that's where we are embedding those concepts, so that teachers have an opportunity to demonstrate to the students that we don't just teach math, and then we teach science, and we teach history, and they're all isolated and separate. They're actually overarching concepts such as conflict, chaos, relationships, patterns, that overarch all of those, and so we have put those in place next year. Goal five was to design services and interventions to support social emotional growth. What we noticed and what we learned last year from a professional development that Kathleen brought to us from Dr. Joy Davis, was that a lot of times, characteristics of gifted students aren't displayed in that nice way that we like them to be in the classroom, for example, with inquisitiveness. The student who has lots of questions but raises their hand politely and waits to be called on can often be seen as, yes, they ask a lot of questions and they think outside of the box, but they do it in a way that is nice and polite in the classroom. However, the student who interrupts and says, but what if the sun were to burn out? Or what if the moon and the sun traded places, but they don't raise their hand, they're often seen as a disruption in the classroom. However, both of those are examples of a student being inquisitive. So we trained our lead instructional coaches on how to recognize when a student has that trait, whether it's being manifested in a positive way or a negative way, and then how to work with teachers on being able to recognize that, and then how to attend to it, to teach those students that it's okay for them to ask questions, but there's a process and procedure for doing that, and maybe that means they simply just need to write it down, because their head is going so quickly, they just need to get it out. So instructional coaches collaborated with the teachers during their PLC time to reinforce Goal six was to develop and implement a five-year comprehensive training plan for anyone who comes, has direct interaction with our students with attributes of giftedness. So this year, our goal was to gather some baseline data from the low-lay, co-lay observations regarding the use of differentiated instruction. So I was able to work with both Dr. McLean and Dr. Braybrand on our co-lay, low-lay visits to kind of get a gauge on where we are with differentiation across the division at our elementary level, and then to gather data on the GO Center experience from a parent's survey. We did, were able to gather 37 responses from parents at the GO Center, and they're going to give us some guidance as we move forward with where we want to grow that program. So for next year, we want to use that data to provide training on the use of the TLC cycle to strengthen our use of differentiation in the base schools for our gifted learners, and then using the GO Center data, I've created a GO experience document that is based on the National Association of Gifted Children standards of what they say programming should look like for the education of gifted students, and how we can take what we're doing really well at the GO Center and expand it. And then we would just, in years three through five, continue to collect the data, review, and refine the process. Goal seven is to establish processes and opportunities that are inclusive from students from a diverse background. As I mentioned before, we use a holistic identification process in both the schools and the division level, so we were looking at lots of pieces of information. We implemented the Scholars with Promise program. Something that I'm very proud of is the AP teamwork. My background is all elementary, so reaching out to high school and working with a group of high school students was a stretch for me, but it was very exciting. So what we, we set out to say, okay, what do we already have as a division as far as AP goes, and then how do we work to increase enrollment and provide consistency across the division? So our first outcome of that this year was we provided both high schools with guidelines about their summer assignments, so that we are not keeping students away by assigning tremendous amounts of summer work or providing, or requiring them to purchase books that they may or may not be able to afford. So that was set out this year with the hope that they will at least get consistency within each high school, and then next year they'll work collaboratively to get consistency across the division. We are also looking to nurture our Scholars with Promise program by extending that to either after-school, whether that means intercession times or summer programs. Continuing goal seven on the next page, for next year, when I went through the CVGS selection process this year, most of the parent questions that I had revolved around, what exactly do you look for? And I thought, oh my goodness, it's simply an issue of they don't have the information. So when I talked with Ethel Reeves, our coordinator or director for engagement and equity and opportunity, she said, maybe let's front-end it. If we can't do a whole lot about it in the back end about how we select it right now, what we need to do is get the information out there. So we're going to work together this summer to come up with plans to hold parent sessions for incoming middle schoolers, because we recognize that a sixth grader coming in, if they're not on a particular math-science track, their chances of getting into CVGS are greatly reduced. So they need to know that upfront before they do course selection. And then, of course, rising 10th graders who will go through that selection process in the spring. And then for 2017, I'm going to hold informational sessions with the first and second grade teachers about what the NAGLIERI, which is the NAGLIERI Ability Test, measures, and how to reach students scoring 120 or higher in the classroom. What we've noticed is a trend, is that students in first grade will score like a 130 out of 160, which is really, that's two standard deviations from the average. But when we get to second grade, their Stanford scores are extremely low. So we recognize there's a disconnect there. We want to educate teachers on what exactly is that the NAGLIERI is measuring. It looks like a test of puzzles, but what it's measuring is the student's ability to reason and problem solve. And if a student has a high ability there, then the Stanford should not mirror exactly, but it should be some, there should be a correlation there. We are always looking for ways to become more inclusive in our selection of the GO Center students and with CVGS, as I mentioned before. In the last slide, I want to talk to you about the things that we are updating and revising in the plan. Dr. Donna Poland is the state gifted specialist, and when I went to the consortium last fall, she said, you should think of your gifted plan as a living, breathing document. You should always be looking back, reviewing your plan, your processes and procedures to make sure that they are meeting the needs of your gifted learners. So these are the changes that I'm suggesting for the coming school year that you will, we will ask you to vote on, to approve those next meeting. I did update the format as provided by the VDOE in, on March 2017. It's basically just a template, so I inserted it into the new template. I included the multiple criteria, process, and artifacts needed for the new visual and performing arts identification that will begin next year. I provided some clarity around the differentiated math services in elementary, and updated the compacted curriculum for GO Center. I want to talk about that for just a second. So we phased out the A-level math that used to exist from second grade to third and fourth grade. We are keeping the 5A math with some parameters about how do you make a class for 5A, and when do you do small group differentiated services? Something new is that next year, the students who are enrolled in a 5A class will be taking the sixth-grade SOL, because they are being instructed on sixth-grade standards. In the GO Center, for the students who will start third grade at the GO Center next year, we are doing a compacted curriculum, which means they will be taught all of third-grade math and half of fourth-grade math. They will be tested on the third-grade SOLs. When they get to fourth grade, they will finish the second half of fourth-grade math and do all of fifth grade, and take the fifth-grade SOL. So they are essentially skipping the fourth grade because we're compacting it. Then they will follow the same procedure as taking 5A math when they are in fifth grade and taking the sixth-grade SOL. So we are accelerating math. This is the first group of kids that have come to the GO Center with no A-level math experience as a whole class separate out. So we wanted to provide that service for them. And then I'm also providing clarity in the plan around the appeals procedures for each level. There were some time constraints around the school-based appeals, but there weren't any around the division, and which is basically a GO Center appeal, and so I use the same timelines, like it's 10 days after the parents are notified of the decision, and then the appeals has 20 days after that. So this is all available for you, the gifted plan has been attached or sent to you by Wendy. So I will see you again next meeting, unless you guys have any questions.
Well, thank you so much for presenting on this. It is a lot of information. I think I made it through about 70 of the 90 pages.
In this booklet, as I was going through today, I had a couple different questions. Where to start? Okay. So how many students were identified in the Scholars program this year? Is it, was it all schools you were working with?
All elementary schools. So each of the elementary schools identify between three and six students that were identified as Scholars with Promise. Now, that's not a gifted label, so we don't report that to the state, it's more of an in-house identification.
And was that just based off of, clearly kindergarten would be a little bit harder, but you know, were the teachers working collaboratively to say, you know, I saw this attribute in kindergarten, maybe this is somebody you should look at, and how did you kind of go about identifying the students?
So it, it was pretty much exactly like that. So let's say, for example, a coach or school has decided they're going to work with the first grade. So as they are implementing those three strategies that they chose, and some, they're just good teaching strategies. What teachers would note as they were using those strategies in their classroom were the kids who seemed to rise to the top, those kids who seemed to think outside of the box, or really hang on to that information very quickly. And then as a team, the first grade team would sit down and say, hey, I've got these two kids, these three kids that seem to be really, I think they don't have the home environment to support and nurture them, so these are the kids that we're going to commit to as a school nurturing. And then they would give that information to the principal, and they work together as a team.
Okay. And then looking through for the visual arts placement coming up in, what was that, 2019?
So the identification will begin next year, programming will begin 18, 19.
Okay. And then I think I read that those students will be housed at TC Miller and Dunbar?
There will be, there are spots that will be held for some students, but we are also, it's going to be similar to GO and base school services. So we'll have some students that may have spots at Dunbar or TC Miller, but there will be programming available in the regular school that looks more like differentiation of arts and music and theater services.
Okay. And then GO Center will kind of remain like the housing of the academic achievement students?
Yes.
I guess to put it that way, if you have to break them down like that. Okay. And then one more thing about the GO Center survey, was that sent to all parents at GO? Because only 37 responses, there's what, like 150 kids there?
There are 139 students at the GO Center this year, and 37 responded. It was sent to all GO Center parents.
Via?
Infinite campus, Edline, we pushed it out through email.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this comes to us next meeting for approval?
Yes, sir.
You know that I'm involved in a superintendent search process? By the way, thank you.
Thank you.
We know this is a gifted board.
Yeah, I couldn't help. So that brings us to policy KG-R, Community Use of School Facilities: Rules and Conditions. Mr. Copeland?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I bring for your review Regulation KG, which deals with outside facilities use. This policy, as it existed in its current state since 2011 and 2014, we just kind of updated it to the new VSBA format. Tonight, the major changes that I'm bringing to you are the updates of fees towards the last two pages of the policy, and many of those updates are directly related to Heritage High School. Heritage High School during the first year is in its warranty period, and we don't allow outside entities to use a new building during the warranty phase, because we, if somebody else breaks it, we can't get it fixed, but if it just breaks, then we can get it fixed. So now that we're coming out of the warranty phase this summer, we wanted to get this, the new and specific spaces that are at Heritage High School Incorporated, do some other updates in the policy. The other big change that you will see is on the second page of the policy, which is page 30 of your board book, specifically the note at the bottom that the Heritage High School track, indoor track is billed on a flat fee basis, and I'll explain that a little bit. We went with the flat fee basis so that nobody gets a discount or a half off, because our primary users for the indoor track are other districts and regions around the state. As we have an indoor track, towards the end of the indoor track season in February, they will book our track for all of their large competitions. So since we have one of the best indoor track facilities in a high school in the state of Virginia, it's in high demand, especially in this part of Virginia, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into running a track meet, and when they come in, they basically take over the whole space. We provide our equipment, we provide our timing system, you know, our custodians are doing a lot of work. So working with the athletic director at Heritage High School, we developed a pricing around $2,500 for a large track meet to come into Heritage High School, and that's based off of five hours, which is normally what it takes to complete a district or region level meet. We kind of bounced that number off a few of the surrounding regions and districts, and nobody seemed to care about $2,500 for an indoor track meet. And that's kind of an all-expenses-paid thing. We provide everything, including the security, the custodians, to clean up any of our staff that need to be there. So... So that's kind of the big changes in the policy. We added the, we specifically lined out new items for the Heritage High School auditorium, for those of you that have been in it. It's a really nice space. We expect it to attract a lot of attention for events. We added the Heritage High School baseball field, updated some stuff on the outdoor track and a few other spaces with the EC glass main gym, added the forum space for Heritage and updated the fees related to, on the very last page, what we get charged by the city for police and fire support, increased by $5 our hourly fee for Lynchburg City School staff, which is primarily custodians. And the few additional things you see there for athletic field, lights, PA systems and things like that. So I'll gladly answer any questions. This is information tonight for hopeful action on July 11th.
Okay. Dr. Colm?
Chair, I see this was last revised February 18, 2014. Is that correct?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
So it's been looked at since the 1970s, and so that's good.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, I wanted to know succinctly, the superintendent may weigh on, this will be another discussion. Sounds good what's being presented, but during the summertime and throughout the year, there are certain pockets of our community that really need parks and rec available, opportunities to be able to have means to gyms or other types of facilities that could maybe foster achievement in the classroom, safety of our students, enhancement of those students. To the degree that this policy addresses all of that, I certainly would like to revisit it and look at it and to see, how are we doing, since it says in the opening statement, working with the community? How are we doing with best using our schools to meet needs where we can around recreation and support and help of those pockets of the population who need it most?
So our doors are always open for the public to contact our facilities use office to determine times that they might need to use facilities, gymnasiums, classrooms, whatever it is, and work through this agreement. This agreement lays out all the rules, responsibilities, who does what, what you have to provide. So this, this policy, this regulation is used to manage those that approach us that say they want to use our facilities. Now, there are certain partnerships and things that exist within the city. We have a, a general use partnership with Lynchburg City Parks and Recreation. That's why you will see adult volleyball leagues that are hosted at our schools. You will see the, the very large winter youth basketball league that's primarily played at our schools. You'll see Hill City Youth Football that, that uses our football fields in our schools for all their practice sites. So there's a lot of this stuff that's going on. If there are others, I, you know, please come forward and, and get in touch with Robin Kinnear and our facilities use office.
Yes, sir. And I'm finishing, and, and thank you, Mr. Copeland. And I know that you're doing the best you can with it. I would just be interested in revisiting this policy, maybe seeing, is there some way to survey the community around needs that are still out there that maybe we could do more to help? Even with these fees, to take care of the police officers alone is another added that knocks some people out of the ballpark. But at the same time, I'm trying, fishing around too, when access has been closed to so many other places in the community, how can our schools be used to help where best? And where would that be possible to do that? Since this policy has come up, I'm simply wanting to put it on the table for future discussion.
Dr. Dolan, so?
I just wanted to, just one more thing to think about when we, because we've reviewed this, I think, well, at least with 2014, and it might have been one time before that, too.
2011.
And one of the issues that does come up for organizations and individuals, and they need to have liability insurance.
Sure.
And so when people complain about the price, it might only be $25 per hour for a room, but we can't have people in our buildings who don't have some sort of liability insurance. And so that's just one cost that is, you know, the community does have to bear for the protection of our, you know, our staff, our buildings.
Sure. Mr. Pollak?
And my comment is more, I was pleased to find information of a partnership between the city of Lynchburg and Lynchburg City School called the Shared Use Agreement that I was able to read up on. It kind of outlined some of the things that you were talking about, about how specifically the two can collaborate to help each other out. I was able to get some information from Mr. Copeland about some things Lynchburg City Schools already has in place with that shared use agreement and how people are taking advantage of it. So I advise people to take a, take a look at that, because it's some very beneficial information. But on that note, there are some signs, some signage issues at some of the schools where it is common knowledge that is accessible for the kids to play at the playground after school hours during the schools, but there are still signs that say, "No trespassing", da, da, da. I brought it up briefly, and I never did follow up with you, but there are still some signs that communicate a different message than what, what LCS is proposing. Not anything intentional, but I think they might be old or haven't been updated, but there are still some signs that, and I can give you specific.
Okay, yeah, if you have specific locations, I'd agree.
But other than that, the Shared Use Agreement would be a good place to start to see.
I mean, one, one thing that we do put signage up related to playgrounds would be, you know, "In hours of darkness, it's closed."
Right.
Things like that. Doesn't work all the time.
Good. Ms. Snyder?
When we have events at the schools, and I see we have a fee for the police and fire and for the city school staff, we have a minimum amount of police officers that we need per, you know, do they give us like, we're going to have 400 people there, and then we say, okay, you need five police officers or?
Well, it depends on who's having the event. If it's a Lynchburg City Schools event, or if it's an outside entities event. If it's a Lynchburg City Schools event and it's the Fall Band Concert, I'm not worried about police officers because I've got staff there. But if it's the Lynchburg Symphony or some other outside entity that's coming in to use our space, we do have a requirement for sometimes if their crowds are going to be that large that they actually pay for the law enforcement. And in some instances, especially with the EC glass auditorium, actual fire department to be on hand due to the sizes of the crowds.
But that's kind of depends on who's coming in, and then they give you an estimate as, or whoever's in charge of it?
Correct.
Of what they think the crowd situation will be like?
Yes.
But do we have it, like, you have to have a minimum of one, or if it's an outside?
Yes. I mean, if they hit, if they hit some thresholds, we do have specific requirements.
Okay.
And that's to protect us.
Right.
As much as to protect them.
Right. I know. It's crazy. People.
So the, the fees, like for the, the new Heritage Field House, is that enough? I've, I've seen some, back when my kids were in high school, some large meets hosted at, at other facilities, and sometimes things go awry. There was some ancillary damage, and I didn't know, is this sufficient to cover any things? Is there, would there be insurance that would, that might cover something?
Are we talking like specifically large events, like an indoor track meet or?
Yeah, mostly, yeah.
Yeah. We, I mean, because most of the other users are VHSL.
Okay.
They provide their liability insurances and name us as insured.
Okay.
Before they come in and use the facility.
And, and this, these, these charges cover our costs associated with the utilities and the cleanup and prep and equipment, wear and tear and all that stuff?
And that's exactly where we're trying to get to.
Okay.
Is to cover our costs related to that wonderful, nice gym.
Right.
So that people can't come in and use the gym and have a regional track meet for $450.
Right.
And we can't even pay the fees of the people that are working for that amount.
Okay. All right. I guess, is this board willing to just put this on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to H6, Policy J and Student Fees Fines, Charges and Regulation and the associated, and the regulation that goes with it. Dr. McLean?
I wish I could say this is a simple and easy one.
Pardon me, Dr. McLean, I'm sure.
It is an important one, and let me just give the quick background before I dive into this. So we have a state code and also a VSBA policy where we need to be following some pieces that we need to get up to date with, and that is being able to post fees that the board has approved, student fees, and that there are waiver processes for families. But let me give you the other part of this. We, as we did some data checks on this, we currently have situations where there are students who have obligations that accumulate over time, second grade, third grade, and it keeps going all the way until they get to 12th grade and graduation. And to be able to walk at graduation, you have to be clear of your obligations, and we have situations where they owe things from 10 years ago, and we haven't had a good process to kind of stop that from going forward. If you just look in the last two years, we have well over $100,000 in unpaid obligations from student fees. So this is a issue where we feel for the need to have greater financial stewardship, and at the same time, trying not to erect barriers for students to participate. And that's a tricky balance to strike. So what I want to share with you is for tonight for information, for the next meeting to request action, on two new, a policy and regulation that are new to replace the old ones. If you look in your packet at JN, that is pretty much verbatim VSBA policy. You'll see just some minor, just wording changes that also then links to the new regulation. But to call your attention to this, it says what types of fees can be charged, that they're supposed to be approved by the school board to be charged, that we need to be able to have reduced or waived fees for parents. And there's things like you can't withhold a student's report card or class schedule if they haven't paid. So I want to spend the, a few minutes then just on JNZR, which is the regulation, call your attention to some, some, some different parts. If you look at Section 2, it talks about there being fees, and I'm going to refer you to the last page then, sorry for the flipping back and forth. On page 5 of this, it has a fee schedule. We have listed fees that admittedly, at this point, are not the entirety of all fees, but they are the fees that are the most common fees that we have across, parking decal, different course fees that are tied towards CTE courses. There are a number of other fees at the, at the school level that we need some time to work through that are different, and we need to, we need some time, and we in the future then would add to this list for ones that are common across. But that's the listing of fees we're required to do. And I did want to mention that what we have in front of you is a result of the work of another task force. Mr. Beckles was a part of this, as well as some of our staff at schools, to create this document that we've also worked through with, with Nora Dunn. So Section 3 is outlining what we would have for a waiver process. We will need to develop the specifics of this, but the, the code requires us, and we should, say whenever we charge a fee, here's how you can have a reduction or waiver to that fee based on different situations. So we would need to create that part. 4 is payment. Now, this is a, this is a pretty critical one that is a bit of an update to practice. So it says in here, if you were participating in an optional activity, that includes extracurricular activities, that includes parking, that includes a variety of things, that you should pay the fee associated with that before you participate. So this is in essence a pay before you play or participate kind of part that's in there. The reason why that is in there or a part of that is that we have found that sometimes our practices are that we don't hold students to pay those, but they accumulate that as an obligation that they're asked to pay later. And then the next time they go to do that, the same thing happens, and over time, we are in essence enabling that debt to accumulate and accumulate and accumulate. So this is a pay before participation piece. If there's a required activity, so an approved material fee, such as one of the CTE courses or things like that, then we do give a leeway of time to, a little bit of time to pay that. And at any point that a parent is asking to extend a payment plan, they can work with the school to, to, to set that up. It's also the case that if there's a, and I apologize, I noticed a little lettering format issue, and Section 4 will fix. But it's also the case that when something occurs during the year, that we need to notify the parent in a timely manner, not wait till the end of the year to do it, but it also can have an impact and a consequence if that's not paid in time. So in Section 5, you'll notice, a student can't begin participation in any optional activities if there's obligations for any fees or fines previously incurred. Now, I'm going to talk about how we, how we would implement this, but it's also the case, if it happens after the activity's begun, they have two weeks to pay for that. We need some, the belief is that we need to be responsible financially, that when something is incurred, that we hold students for paying that, with an understanding that there may be some fee waivers applied to those. And even getting to the point towards the bottom of Section 5, at some point, there's the need that if a payment is not made and no, no reasonable attempts, that it may be needing to begin a legal process for collection. There are other divisions that have that. We don't currently have that, that we've instituted, and it is a, it is a cumbersome process currently within our structure, but that, that's putting that in there for a recourse if needed. There's a part in that section there about library books. We want students still to be able to access library books, but again, we don't want to have an unlimited checkout. There are books not returned, and then there continues to be unlimited checkout, that there becomes restrictions that are placed while there still is the ability to have that. This is really about communication and following up, and so that's the part in there about the library. If you look about lost, Section 7, lost, damaged textbook, Chromebook, calculator, or other learning device, that if there's a learning device required for learning, we are not talking about taking that away, but in the instance of, let's say, a Chromebook, if you have a situation, student has a situation where it's been lost and damaged and no repayment has been made or no effort for that, then to have that learning device, there would be restrictions upon that, to not take it home, let's say, or to have some parts about that. So we're not restricting the learning at school, but we're also not contributing to the possibility that the debt continues to, to, to be incurred and to grow. Section 8 is around different collection efforts we would take. This is, this is a hard one to put forth because we realize that there's a fair amount of debt that some different, or obligations that students have. So the, so that's why Section 9 is put in here. And what this says is, if the board approves this policy and regulation, we would need you to decide at what point we would start putting in anything that is prior debt. So this suggests to give a year of leeway on prior debt before any of those parts of prior debt would come into play. But what we would go forth into this coming year is you have to pay for something before you participate in it. And you, if you do incur a charge along the way, you do have a time period you have to meet to pay that charge. Clearly, how we set up the fee waiver is critical. You notice there's one place in it that talked about a 20% fee that would be applied, but that's just to, to give a starting point and that we could modify that. We would not charge, an example of like, say, a family whose house is burned and the library books were in there, we're not talking about charging anything in those kinds of cases. I don't think our goal is to get to the point that there is zero uncollected student fees, but over $100,000 in two years sounds like it's something that we need to address. So we bring this forth. Welcome your questions and comments.
So I noticed the, the fee schedule on the back, and it doesn't appear to include everything you might charge a fee for. So for example, you've got the Chromebook Protection Plan, but I don't see what the replacement fee would be for a Chromebook if it was lost and the family didn't have the protection plan. Another thing that I don't see here is, this is something that even if you have the protection plan, I just learned this, but your child loses the charger, you have to pay $45 for a charger. And so I'd also like to ask that perhaps there's some research done on whether or not there could be less expensive chargers for replacement for the Chromebooks, given the Chromebook can't cost, but you know, double, a little more than double that fee. I also don't see in here things like marching band, is that included in this plan in terms of having to pay before you play? And I ask because marching band, and I think some of the theater program, at least maybe one of the theater programs, have kids pay in installments, and it's worked very well for families because of the, the fees.
Sure. So things that are common across, so that you name like the Chromebook pieces, we can look to add those pieces in? The, the thought, and maybe we need some specific language to that, if there's an installment plan? plan put into place, the idea is that you're paying that on time.
Okay.
So it's not meant to be that you have to pay it all upfront if there is a...
You'd lose a lot of families participating if they had to.
Sure, sure.
Do it all at one time.
And some of that can be almost part of the fee waiver piece too, because sometimes it may be different amounts that people are paying and trying to sort that through. And admittedly, that's a piece that's going to need some more details worked out.
Okay, thank you.
But I noticed that registration, it used to be charged years ago, it was free, but by the time you leave registration, you can have, it's overwhelming how much you leave thinking, oh my day, how much I have to pay. But you know, I know there are fees, and that's fine, but you know, installments are great, and also, I'll think of it and come back. But it can be overwhelming to see all these fees at once, or just look at...
Understood. I think the intent of the state code was that we were transparent about what fees we're charging and they're upfront, and at the same time, we're providing information on the fee waiver part. And so what we're trying to do is get better at that. Mr. Beckles, reunion.
I think one of the things, we all aware of the fees, and we all aware that some people may be financially what I call challenged, and we understand that. But there's no excuse for a lack of character and responsibility regardless of what your economic standard is. And one of the issues we see here is people are not paying the fees, anything on the fees. Yes, some people may not be able to pay 100%, but they surely can pay a dollar, they can pay five, they can pay something, some way of showing their responsibility for the indebtedness in which they occurred. Then that's more the issue than the amount. We agree, we're never going to get 100, I say we're never going to get, but we're not saying we don't have zero obligations, but it surely can be significantly less than what it currently is if we all have the understanding that everybody can pay something, even if it's a dollar, but you're showing that you are responsible and have character. That's the piece I think we're missing when we, when we look at people from only an economic or even a poverty perspective. And just, just for the example, poor people can have character and responsibility and accountability, and I think that's the biggest issue that we see here. Because a lot of, I mean, this is a huge amount of unclaimed fines and fees that are not paid, students and staff. To me, that's unacceptable.
Yeah, I mean, it also says in the, in the policy, the body of the policy, it says each time a fee is charged, and notice will be given that a fee waiver may be requested. So, I mean, I know we've been focusing on the fees here, but that's in the regulation part, so.
And I would say, everybody that we, that we have worked with with fees, one of the things I do is, how much can you pay? What I look for is not just the amount that they can pay, but they are consistent with what they're paying. We will work to the end with working with them. Where the tolerance level goes out the window is when you say we're not going, I'm not going to pay for anything. Whoa, 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 here, back up here a second. Life isn't free. You can pay something. So I just wanted the board to know, and the public to know, we do bend over backwards to gauge the parent plan to what you can pay. As long as you're consistent with it, we'll go to the end and agree to work with you.
Dr. Collins?
Thank you. Mr. Beckles well said, $100,000 is still just...
It's more than that.
Or more than that, that's totally unacceptable. Again, with the pilot program with Darrington and Bass, I think that there are ways that the community can begin to engage in working one-on-one with some of those cases, because that should not remain. And in a future meeting, Mr. Chair, could we get an update on the Chromebook situation? Where are we with Chromebooks?
Sorry, Ms. Snyder?
And I'm kind of piggybacking off what Dr. Dolan Sewell said. I don't imagine these are all of the fees that we charge, and I'm just thinking, and I'm not sure if it's still an actual fee, but when we have our specialty programs at schools, Go Center, Gov School, I know at least I, we used to have to pay a fee, a Go Center fee, and I don't know if there's a Gov School fee. And then this one that took me by surprise, sorry, was the senior dues, like, what is that? What is that going to? And were those included on here?
There's another policy, I don't remember the number right now, that have the fees that you're referring to, in that that's a separate, I don't know how we...
Well, there's, the bottom of it has the, the school for innovation part, and some of the other things with gifted services in there, but those are really for non...
Yeah, right. This was something, you know, you go in and you have to pay for your agenda, and you had a Go Center fee as well. Are there, do we have those across the board, like for Gov Schools, STEM Academy? Do we have those?
The agenda one is one of those that, it's all over the map. Some schools do, some schools don't, so that's one we have, we were talking about, why don't we just make it standard? Either they all pay or we don't pay. So yes, the, going through this process was, needless to say, it was more difficult to select a superintendent than it was to figure this thing out. So yes, they are really... To make it all inclusive of every fee, it's going to kind of be impossible to a certain extent. I guess we'll just decide which ones is...
Sorry, can I say one more thing?
It's a bear.
Can I just state, as we are expanding our programs to include students who may not traditionally have been invited to those programs, and even myself, or middle-class parents going into these programs, some of the fees can be quite a shock. And for parents to be accepting, letting their kids go there when they get there that day, finding out that field trips that year are going to cost $300, and fees are going to be upwards, I think those are something we should present to the parents, and definitely have a waiver process for those things, because that could make some parents withhold their kids from those programs.
Would agree. I think the other thing I'll point out, we try to stay, we're listing the fees kind of consistent with the, with the regulation. The regulation itself lists out certain fees that you should publish, and we try to stick with that. So it wasn't kind of what I call an indiscriminate, we'll put this one or don't put that one, in the absence of trying to put, be all-inclusive, because it just won't be, oh, difficult to be, I should say, we'll put it out there.
Okay. Ms. Carter, and then Ms. Morrison?
And it would be nice to, is everyone given the waiver you have to ask for?
So we'll be developing that process. The thought is at the point that you're given what the fee is, that we would want to have the information about the waiver as a part of that.
Because as...
Snyder?
No, Mrs. Snyder stated, you know, like, a lot of students are turned off by the drama program.
Yeah.
Because your first heard is $1,000.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's intentional, but it works, because a lot of students would say, my parents can't afford that, so no use even going in, going into that. I've heard that too many times.
Ms. Morrison?
I've not ever heard of $1,000.
$1,000.
It's 800. It was 800 issue at Denver.
At the middle school?
Yeah, the middle school.
I think that we'll find, when you look into this, that as we found with our nutrition program, the number of the parents or students who are not paying can pay, they're just not doing it. Just like the school nutrition program, they're not the free and reduced students. It's, it's people who are just, like you said, not stepping up and doing what they're supposed to do. And I do think though, that the waiver process needs to be, we need to be considerate of people who are applying for it, because it's hard to walk in and say, and to ask, if you've ever had to do that, it can be embarrassing to walk in and say, I can't afford this at this time. And we don't want any student not to participate because they can't afford it.
I'd just make a comment in relation to some of those, the, this in many ways was a opening entry into this. It uncovered, and we needed to get moving on pieces that we felt like we should and could right now. It opened the door for other ones that clearly we need some more discussion. Originally, this was going to tackle school supplies too, which ties to the agenda and all that. So there is more work to be done. We presented you with what we felt like at this point were the parts we could put forth.
Service will come to us for action this month?
Yes.
Are we okay with, as it stands right now? If not, you know, pass along comments, please, and you know, then we'll work, we'll work through it. Okay, thank you. Okay, brings us to, I, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. We had summer school registration today. Summer school starts July 5th. So our kids will have a great Fourth of July weekend, and then into summer school. We also have some sports camps going on over the summer, and we're excited our kids will take advantage of that. Our summer hoops collaboration's about to start. S O L Content Academy is starting on Monday. That's a chance for our high school kids who may be past the class but struggled to pass the S O L, to get a final opportunity to pass that S O L, and still actually graduate in some cases, and be counted in our graduation rate for this year. So very excited about that. And we have eight 21st century programs running this summer too, in many of our schools, for kids to provide programs. So we are really, really staying active with that. I also wanted to share my thanks to Dr. Dolan Sewell for her leadership. I know in the resolution that was shared earlier, she was described as a champion. You were a champion for kids, you were a champion for equity, you helped me on that journey for both. And I was always fascinated, I appreciated in others, and I think it's a hard quality to find, the ability to distill complex issues into brief key points that really summarize the whole issue. You have a gift for that, and I think it helped me become a better superintendent as a result. So I thank you for your service and for your sacrifice. There were many emails and phone calls in the morning, at night, and I have to say, sometimes when I thought I was the first to see something or know something, you had already texted me to go, have you seen this? And I'm like, gosh, before I could share it off. But seriously, I appreciate everything, and I will miss you. The last thing I want to say is, I'm not a goodbye guy, I'll see you again. I was born in this state, I've lived my whole life in this state, and I'm not leaving this state. I told folks that staff appreciation, and by the way, staff, I have the best leadership team, Mr. Copeland, Dr. McLean, Mr. Beckles, Ms. G, Ms. Sullivan, Mike Water already laughed, all the directors, April, and Maria and Dixie back there giving me looks. I know Ethel's missing, Latanya's not here tonight, Ms. Bowling, and I know that's not your new name, and I didn't really pay attention on the PowerPoint. I'm sorry, I should have...
Keep it real.
I'm keeping it real. I love this staff, and the bottom line is, they're moving forward. This wasn't a meeting where there was nothing to share and nothing's going on. From the beginning, I was told, try to slow down. We have a staff that is still fully engaged, wanting to continue to move this system forward. I've already texted since the announcement, I didn't know what it would be, but I've already texted Larry Massey, and we're going to be talking tomorrow, and this system is full steam ahead. And finally, I would just say, I think the greatest thing in life is to love and to be loved, and I was fortunate to get to do both in Lynchburg City Schools. So thank you very much.
Board comments. Ms. Morrison?
I took the opportunity this past weekend to read the book that Heritage High School gave us, and I hope that you all do, particularly the part about the memory project. It's, it's very moving, and so many beautifully written pieces of literature and artwork. And so I am very grateful for this book, and I will share it with my family and other people, and I hope, I'm looking forward to getting more.
Ms. Carter?
I was able to go to the first graduation at the new Heritage High School. That was wonderful and it was cool. Also, I'd like to just thank the students who did the thank you to the board for the, being able to go on their field trip, that was great. And to Gina, I just want to say, Dr. Dolan Sewell, that your wisdom and willingness to tackle the difficult issues and to keep us informed of what our goal is and our purpose will be missed. And you do have a gift for just making sure everything's clear and concise, and thank you.
Dr. Collins?
Just going around the table. I'm going, I'm going to start with Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell. I'm as strong as you come in a number of ways, but I'm a crybaby at the same time. And these are one of those moments. Dr. Regina Dolan Sewell, you have set an example of what it means to be a board member at a level that I think is unmatched. You've done an excellent job of showing us a balance of family and board responsibilities. And this board member is appreciative of that, having a wife and two kids. Your adherence to board protocol and understanding of it has been exemplary. As it relates to evidence-based research, no one can out-research you. And you have used that gift to not only support admin, but also to challenge when necessary. With all that, your compassion and concern for the total community, as Dr. Braybran just mentioned, is noticed by all. I'll never forget, at the Hunt &amp; Y, when there was tragic death in the community, you had a young man with you that night. And your care and concern for that young man was greater than even the biological parent could have. Families struggling, key policies around equity and addressing implicit bias. You know, if I had anything to do with it, they changed that three-term, nine-year. Thank you for what you have done for this board and for this community. You're a rising star. Continue to do what you're doing. Thank you. As it relates to Dr. Braybran, I think that Sharon Carter has acknowledged this as well in the past, but having attended every Virginia School Board Association session that you could attend since I've been on the board, man, the other superintendents, the other persons around the state, that guy you all have is remarkable. And I have not heard one person anywhere say anything different than that. How you managed to get to every event, you were at events, and I thought I got to everything. You were at events, coming, going, there's nobody that could ever do that, and you didn't have to. And I want to say thank you. My wife is a product of Fairfax County Public Schools. And I looked at that meeting, Mr. Superintendent, when you were there to, to receive after the vote, and they know what they're getting, and we know what we're losing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll never forget you.
Me too.
No pressure.
Well, I'll start with Dr. Dolan Sewell. I think when I first started, I had no idea what I was getting into, still barely have a smart, what I got into. But I remember, I asked, everyone spoke very highly of you, and I remember I asked you one specific question, and it was, if you could give me one piece of advice, what would you tell yourself on your first day? I remember during orientation, I asked you that question. I was like, what piece of advice would you give yourself if you could go, if you could go back and tell yourself anything? And you, it was very simple. You didn't try to make it deep and all philosophic, you were just depend on the wisdom of your experienced board members. And that sounds like this very simple concept, but as a new board member, coming on and having these grand schemes of things that I think I can do, and what I want to accomplish, and things that I want to go, ways that I want to go when it comes to protocol, how to bring things up, how to agree with someone without agreeing with them, you were very, very helpful in seeing those. And I was always able to come back to that first piece of advice that you gave me, was to depend on the experienced board members. And even though you might not have, I might have said, hey, Dr. Row, Dr. Dolan Sewell, you're my mentor, you're my role model, you, you, you lead by example. And sometimes you can have a mentor and a role... role model, you led by example, and sometimes you can have a mentor in a role that you don't have a direct relationship, but you can just see what they're doing, and you can mirror that, so I wanted to thank you for that, and everything that you provided, and to you. I think the cool thing about our relationship was that we didn't necessarily see eye to eye all the time, but you gave it to me, and I gave it to you, and I wanted to say thank you for help, both of you helping me, because this was so new, a new area for me to walk into, so thank you guys for believing and trusting me, and kind of empowering me to do great things, so thank you guys both.
I already said my goodbye to Dr. Dolan Sewell.
I just kind of felt compelled to speak in that moment, but I didn't get to say, we kind of said goodbye at the last meeting to Dr. Braybrand, but I didn't speak at that point, because I wasn't ready for all that. But I remember, you started in April, I started in July that year, June, July, so we kind of been going on this path together, so that was nice to learn with you, and I think one of the first things we did together is you went to the new superintendent orientation, I went to the new school board orientation in Richmond for V S B A, and that was an enlightening experience. But I want to thank you for being brave while you've been here, and tackling some of the subjects that I think some of us have wanted to talk about that might make other community members or lesser superintendents uncomfortable, but things that needed to be talked about. And whenever we have our quarterly meetings, one of the main things we end up talking about are our families, and I think that's kind of your bottom line, that's the main thing, keeping it the main thing. So, thank you to you, but thank you to Debbie and the boys for giving up their time with you and letting you lead our city and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. May?
Dr. Dolan Sewell, as a fairly, I still consider myself a fairly new board member. I've been very deliberate during this past year to listen very attentively, and I must say that your words are the ones that I hold on to closest because of your insightful ways and your demonstrated dedication to this board. So, I am going to miss you. You've set a very high standard, and I only hope that myself and we as a board can live up to the expectations and the level that, the bar that you've set. Dr. Braybrand, I'm so proud to have been able to serve on this board with you. You've set a bar high as well. I think all of us around the table are proud when we go out and can say that, you know, Dr. Braybrand is our shining star superintendent. You've been innovative, and your foresight is amazing, and I really thank you for your dedication. I wish you all the best, and I hope this is not goodbye to us, it's just so long for now, but best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Senin?
Well, nobody's newer on this board. But in the few months that I've been on the board, I have recognized in you, Dr. Dolan Sewell, all the qualities that everybody around this table has mentioned, and I have appreciated as a new person, who sometimes my head is just spinning with all the details, your way of boiling them down and keeping us focused on the essential point and what we're actually debating, is much appreciated. You're like our defective parliamentarian, and that really helps, and so, I've appreciated that, and I only wish I would have had more time to learn from you and all the experience you have to offer. And Superintendent Braybrand, again, I'm sorry I didn't have more time to work with you, I wish you well. I really admire your energy and enthusiasm, and your real apparent love for our schools and our students, it shows through in everything you do, and so, I wish you well, I wish your family well, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Braybrand, I said a lot of my goodbyes last time, and I'll just, I'll just play off of editorial in the paper, said we want our Braybrand 2.0, and, you know, there's only one Braybrand. And there's only one Dr. Scott Braybrand. I mean, in a good way, and it's been a privilege to serve alongside you, and your commitment and dedication to the students is clear and obvious, and I know that's something that we as a board, that's going to be a real focal point as we go forward in selecting a new superintendent. If we got a Braybrand 1.5, we'd probably be doing pretty good, but it's been, it's been a real privilege serving, working alongside you, so.
If I could have just 15 seconds, I know this is just, this is me being Braybrand, I know. David Childress, I didn't call your name out, you did a great job with LCS One. Steve stepped up for transportation. April, did I say your name to keep our testing stuff straight? I have a great staff. Every child by name, by need, it's really all about every person. Love every person, and they will give you your best. That's what I learned as a teacher, and we keep doing it in the system. There's a lot of love on this board. There's sometimes some other stuff that's going on besides love, but I'm confident, even as it's hard to find somebody new, the framework's in place and the love and care's in place. You just keep tending to it, and it will continue to get better, so, thank you.
And Dr. Dolan Sewell, who, after the year that we have been through, I have relied on you, and I'm going to call you Gina, because-
That's better, that's much better.
I think we're friends at this point, and I-
We're good, we're good.
Yep, yep. It's been educational, it's been growth, your experience shows, and, you know, I've been relying on it, and we play off each other, compliment, I think, points of view, probably that wasn't, not everybody out there might agree with that on every occasion, but it works, it works, and thank you for your time and commitment to the students, to the kids, to the division. And you're just a phone call away.
That's right.
So, all I got to do is remember to breathe.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Informational item, we have our next board meeting is July 11th, 5:30 PM here in the administration room, and we also, at this point, need to enter into closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.237, 11A6, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters, consideration of the investment of public funds. Is there a motion to enter into closed session? Okay, all in favor? Aye, and opposed, no. Okay, we're in closed session, thank you.